Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting over. If you were able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Page.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We have a sign-up sheet that was out front. I have one name on there, and we will call that individual forward at this point, Rose Garringer. Please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Rose Garringer, 9931 West 56th Street in Merriam. And I just want to say, good evening, thanks for allowing public comments. Not all of our local governing bodies allow that, so I appreciate at your bi-monthly meetings that you still allow the public comments. I've been attending the Merriam Police Citizens Academy for the last seven weeks. There's three more weeks, and it's been fascinating to learn what the job of a police officer is like, and a new appreciation for all they do to keep us safe. And I just want to encourage other members of the community to enroll in the Citizens Academy. I believe they have it each year, sometimes more often if there is more interest. It's just been a great way to learn what it takes to keep our city safe. I've also been talking to a lot of residents as I've been out campaigning for city council, and I've learned that there are some things that residents love about Merriam, and a few items that they're concerned about that I thought I would pass along to you guys. The residents love their Merriam neighborhoods, and they love, love, love the Public Works Department, especially the snow removal and that large item pickup that's coming up in a couple of weeks. I've also learned that residents on streets like Johnson Drive and 55th want those speed limits enforced, and that residents are very concerned about the escalating costs of homeownership, whether it's utility bills or tax bills. Those residents, especially ones living on fixed incomes, would like to see the city rein in our spending as well. But I also was made aware that the council is under investigation for Kansas Open Meeting Act violations. Apparently, several complaints were filed in regard to the council making decisions in private instead of at council meetings where the public has an opportunity to hear those deliberations. So I thought that was interesting. I appreciate what you guys do to serve our community. Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garringer. I have no one else listed, but if anyone else would like to come forward at this time, I would entertain you to come. Go ahead, Mr. Crone, come forward and I'll leave you a name and address for the record.
Yes, for the record, Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to speak briefly about CID and IRB. I know there are a couple of agenda items that touch on those, but my concerns aren't really with those individual projects. I think there's a lot of great projects in Merriam, but I think that projects on private land should be privately financed. The city shouldn't be paying for those. They shouldn't be helping entities evade sales tax, which is basically what IRB does. It moves money through the city's hands. It's a lease that's funded by the developer and then paid back to them. It's basically a way to dodge sales taxes, and it doesn't feel right. CID's, there's one coming up that's going to be requested tonight. And as far as I know, the council CID policy hasn't even been approved, hasn't even been drafted yet. I think they were talking about it two meetings ago or so, and already the word's out, and companies are coming and asking for that CID money. Now, these are additional taxes placed on our residents and our visitors to give money that then goes into a private company. I mean, if they wanted to fund their parking lot, for example, they can raise rent a little bit to all their tenants and pay for that parking lot. It would affect the same area, the same geographic area. It would accomplish the same thing, but it wouldn't mask behind government. It wouldn't make the process more complicated and add another little line item to your receipts, sales tax and CID tax. So I just think CID and IRB is unnecessary complication. I've been happy for a number of years to have heard from council and from the mayor that TIF, for example, is sort of on the way out, that it will hopefully be expiring. I think maybe even some city staff have hinted towards that. And I'd be glad to see TIF expire in Merriam, but it would be pretty sad to see it just get filled up with CID in the same place, doing basically the same thing. That is all, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Crone. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? I see no one rushing to the podium, so we will close out the public items at this time. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all items listed in the heading are considered to be obtained by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Do we have two items this evening? Is there anyone that wants either one of those items removed, or can we, we could deal with them together? Okay, I see nobody wanted to pull anything. I would entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve consent agenda items, one and two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item up would be the mayor's report, and at which point we have employee service awards, I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Engel? I'll come forward, and you can call the other people.
These are our third quarter certificates of service, so every quarter we celebrate our employees that have hit a five-year benchmark. For those here this evening for the first time, we used to do all of these at once, and we decided to spread these out so we could actually celebrate smaller groups of folks. So again, what we have this evening are two certificates of appreciation of service for two of our long-term employees. So we'll start with the first one, with 20 years of dedicated service to our police department, Jeremiah Waters. And our second employee to acknowledge this evening from our Merriam Visitors Bureau with 20 years of service also is Karen Crane.
And the next item up on the mayor's report is a proclamation. And I always enjoy giving proclamations, acknowledging important people and individuals in our community. This one is about Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a proclamation for that, so I will just read this. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas a growing number of cities and towns in the United States have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to celebrate Indigenous heritage and resiliency, and whereas the city of Merriam recognizes it was founded and built upon lands first inhabited by Indigenous peoples of this region, and whereas the city of Merriam acknowledges and honors the historical, cultural, and contemporary significance of Indigenous members in our community, and whereas the city of Merriam wishes to preserve and promote the history and culture of all Indigenous people, and that the time has come to observe a yearly holiday in their name. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day, proclaimed on the 9th day of October, 2023. All right. I don't think we have anyone here to accept that, but we will put in the city's coffers. All right. Other things in the mayor's report. I always like to spend a little time about things that's kind of gone on in the last two weeks. Lots happening in the city of Merriam, and it's just good to know what's going on. Okay, I attended the Vernon Place Black Party. It was a great turnout, got to see a lot of people down there and tell them about what was happening in the city. Councilmember, and I think I get everyone here, Hands, Silvers, and Caldwell, I think helped to man the recycling event and the cycling and document shredding event that was held at Nations Holding. Many of our staff helped as well on that, and it was a great opportunity, it was well organized. I was able to go over there and get rid of a lot of things, and so a big thanks goes out to all those individuals involved in that, and it's good that we have those events yearly. I didn't get all of my stuff down there, so we'll have to have another one next year. But yeah, I couldn't get it all in my car. Should have had a bigger vehicle. Okay, I just think it's important just to recognize an individual. I attended Marvin Cansler's funeral. Marvin, if you didn't know, was a longtime Merriam businessman in our community. I think he was a barber for about 50 years, I believe, down in Merriam. So he has passed away, and he knew everybody and didn't forget a name. And so, you know, our condolences go out to his family, and he will be missed but not forgotten. Councilmember Hands and I attended the Flags for Freedom and Community Center Foundation meeting to discuss the best options for transferring flags and supplies to the city. They would be coming for the council here in the near future to discuss how that might transpire if the council's willing to do that and take that over. I attended the Johnson County and Wyandotte County Mayor's meeting, discussed topics and speakers that we'd like to come before us over the next year. We just had kind of a transfer of leadership for that group, and so we kind of laid out for the rest of the year itself as to who we might want to come before us and speak to us. So, let's see, Councilmember Hands and I met with Mr. Engel about the agenda today. The Tim Murphy Art Gallery opening occurred, and I'm sure Ms. Hands was there. Was any other council member were able to make that last Thursday? That's always, is that the first Monday?
Six weeks.
Yeah, every six weeks. Okay, never mind. Well, it's always good to go down there and attend that, and our Merriam Parking Rec Director makes good food usually. I go down there for the food and the art, of course, but it is.
The artwork is still up.
Yeah, the artwork is up, and you still have an opportunity to go down there and see. I have seen the artwork, just didn't get the food and make it that night. The Hot Wheels fire truck made an appearance at our fire station. It's my understanding that Councilmember Leahy took his family, attended that event. I don't know if any other councilman, oh, Ms. Chaveta, did you take your? Okay, sorry, got to go see too. Thanks for having them come up there, chief. I assume that you were involved in that, but I understand that the families had a good time, and I somehow missed it. I don't know, but I'll make it next year, though, if they come back. I, Councilmember Hands and Leahy, attended the Merriam Drive Live event. Was there any other councilmembers? Oh, yeah, Ms. Yadrich was there. Okay, anybody else? Oh, there you go. I guess I didn't get around enough to see everybody, but, so anyway, that's a good event, and it grows every year, we have some good weather and great bands. You know, you should go down there. Hopefully, we have some good tribute bands next year. I didn't do any of the bourbon tasting, but I guess it went over pretty well. But, okay, so I attended a Faith in Blue event. It was hosted by our Merriam Police Department. Chief McGlaughlin and his department put on an event, and we reached out to our area churches, and several members from the churches and our chaplains attended, and we got a chance to watch the Chiefs game, and they fed us, we had some good food over there. And the Chiefs' win was also kind of the icing on the cake. But it's always good to get out and meet our officers under good circumstances, and we appreciate that. And I think that there's also going to be another event coming up tomorrow evening, my understanding, down at Waterfall Park, the Night Out Against Crime. So if you didn't get a chance to go meet with our PD and our officers the other night, you have another chance tomorrow evening down at Waterfall Park, and I think there's going to be food involved getting in that, too. Always good to get free food, man, I tell you. And then, just a shout out to our Merriam Think Pink Week Committee, has been going at it for quite a while, and it's my understanding that there's a successful campaign to help raise funds for the American Cancer Society. Last I heard, they'd raised $791. That may be higher now, but that's the last number I got. But you can still donate to that up until November 1st, is my understanding. And then, just, there's a word out there on the street that if we raise enough funds, and I'm not sure what that number is, but we may have a Merriam employee that's going to shave off his mullet, so.
I donated to the fund to let him keep his mullet.
Oh, well.
As did I.
Thank you.
There is two funds out there. We'll see which one raises the most. Both, either way, it will be good, because it all goes toward the American Cancer Society, and I'm sure everyone in this room has been touched in one way or another, either through personally or through a family member or friends that have dealt with cancer. We would sure like to see that eradicated, so. But that's, does anyone have anything that I've missed?
National Night Out's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. National Night Against Crime at Waterfall Park.
And I'm starting to wonder about the police department, because I had coffee with them last week. Had poveticha, and then they had another thing, and then they, they're very social.
Turns out they like to eat more than me.
They're vodally.
All right, so it's always good to meet with those, and they are very community-oriented, and we appreciate you and those events, chief, to pass it on to your officers, please. Okay, council items. I think we're ready to move on to council items. Consider approval of a professional service agreement with five-by-five engineers. There we go.
Good evening, Mayor and council. In 2022, as you know, we completed an investment-grade audit to identify energy control or conservation measures, and part of those recommendations were to upgrade our HVAC and our building control systems. And the building control systems would be, you know, how we program our temperature so that we can save energy. In August 2023, staff submitted a request for qualifications. We posted it on our city's website and submitted it to qualified consulting firms, and two firms replied to our RFQ. Both firms were interviewed by a selection team consisting of Public Works employees, and we use five criteria to rank them that are listed in your item action form. Five-by-five engineers was selected based on the ranking. They're very knowledgeable and experienced, and very familiar with city of Merriam facilities since they worked on our investment-grade audit. So the scope of work includes preparing drawings and construction administration for HVAC upgrades at City Hall, the Visitors Bureau, and Public Works, and building control system upgrades for those three facilities, as well as our community center and police buildings. The cost for design and administration of construction is $95,000, and if approved tonight, design would be completed in the first quarter of next year, and construction would be completed by the end of next year. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Kumpke?
Thank you for taking questions. My question has to do with upgrades to the community center HVAC system, since it's so new. Why, can you explain why it needs an upgrade along with these others?
So the community center wouldn't have any HVAC upgrades. It would just have the building control systems, just to program those.
But is that to tie it into the other systems, or does it need it?
I know that the scope of work was identified in the audit. I guess I don't know the details of why, you know, what the upgrade would be, but I can get back with you on that.
That'd be nice. I'd really like to know before I voted on it, because it is so new. It seems odd to have to be switching it out already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Kumpke? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
Do you know how old the HVAC system is in the rest of the buildings?
I know that our facility superintendent has worked on this, but I know that they're reaching, as far as these facilities, reaching their 20-year life cycle. So not only will we be saving energy, but also they need to be replaced for, you know, for the system, for the useful life.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Oh, Ms. Hands.
Yes. I move that the council approve the professional services agreement with five-by-five engineers to decide HVAC and building control system upgrades in the amount of $95,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Looks like we have Ms. Chaveta for a second.
Hi, I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
With the community center included in that, I'm going to have to vote no.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like you might have the next item.
Yes. So, as you know, the city has been working with the United States Army Corps of Engineers on our Upper Turkey Creek project for flood risk management and mitigation, and we've been meeting with them on a regular basis. And though the project is in the very early stages of design, a final scope has not yet been identified. Although current impacts to existing properties along Upper Turkey Creek have not yet been determined, staff is recommending beginning the appraisal process for 15 properties west of Merriam Drive, because they touch the creek, from Johnson Drive north to the Upper Turkey Creek Bridge. And we'd like to go ahead and begin that process to determine fair market value for potential future partial or full acquisition of properties or easements that may be necessary. And just to remind you that just because we complete an appraisal, it doesn't mean that the acquisition will occur. It will just help us for planning purposes. So since there are federal funds involved, we follow a certain criteria, commonly referred to as a yellow book. So the proposed scope of work includes a full appraisal and then a review appraisal, which will be the separate agenda item following this agenda item. So we recommend awarding this contract to Bliss Associates. They're very familiar with this process. And the cost for each appraisal for 15 properties, it would be a total of $75,000, 5,000 per property. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Dr. Kumpke? I see no questions.
If I could add to that just before the motion, just as kind of a follow-up. On Friday, we did meet, Public Works Director, the Assistant City Administrator, myself, met with core personnel to make sure that these appraisals will adhere to the core process so that when it comes time for acquisition, we will receive credit against any of the work, including the cost of the appraisals. So we did have those meetings on Friday to make sure that everything was good to go, and dot nyes and cross and t's.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve the professional services agreement with Bliss Associates LLC to complete appraisals in the amount of $75,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy. Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like you have the next item, too.
Yes. So as a follow-up, once Bliss performs the original appraisal, then we're required to complete a review appraisal, and McCord appraisal is recommended to complete those review appraisals at a cost of $2,250 per property, or a total cost of $33,750. So once the original appraisals are completed, it will be about 14 days after that for the review appraisal.
Any questions concerning this topic? Dr. Kumpke? Yep, Mr. Neal, you have something?
What exactly is a review appraisal and how, I mean, in this process?
So they go back, and they perform appraisals as well, but they go back and review it and make sure that they agree with the original appraisal.
Is there a different methodology used, or different data, or, I mean?
I think they use the original data and go back and make sure that they agree with it.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'm happy to do that.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the professional services agreement with McCord appraisal to complete review appraisals in the amount of $33,750.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Oh, Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kumpke. Looks like we've got Mr. Engel coming up for the considering approval of a funding agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a funding agreement with Merriam Center 1 LLC, Merriam Center 2 LLC, related to an incentive request. As council is aware, whenever we receive an incentive request, staff and consultants do the due diligence process of that, kind of dig into the numbers of the request so that we can report back to council, and then council can start to have a conversation in consideration of the terms of agreement if the council should choose to go forward. The point of the funding agreement is that the applicant is on the hook for all of that process, so the taxpayers don't pay for us to investigate their request for incentive. So what we have is we have a funding agreement that's been crafted by our bond council. We have, and it's been executed by the applicant. We also have a $30,000 check on hand that is locked in our safe. Council is to approve the agreement tonight. We will cash that, and we will deposit that, and we will start drawing against those funds to investigate the requests. It is in the contract, as it is in the agenda form. The acceptance of this funding agreement does not obligate the city to award funding of incentives or anything else. This is simply so that we can start the due diligence process, and the taxpayers don't have to pay for that. So again, we will, the process would be as we get our consultants on board, as we start to look into those requests and look out for the cities in the taxpayer's best interest, we will come back to the council in some sort of this or work session, some other way, that we can start to share with those things that we're finding. Council can ask questions. We can make sure that we're running this thing to ground before we actually have to consider if this makes sense or not. Again, this is just a funding agreement. Happy to answer any questions about it.
Okay, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
So when I was reading through the packet and I was reading the legal document regarding this, I noticed CID Act sprinkled throughout the contract, and I was curious why, if we're talking about IRBs?
They've submitted a CID application and an IRB application.
Okay, but tonight we're voting on IRB?
Tonight, what this item is, is a funding agreement for Merriam Town Center.
In regards to an IRB?
In regards to a CID request and an IRB request.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay, yeah, Ms. Ryder.
But we're not agreeing to.
But we're not agreeing to anything yet, correct?
All you are agreeing to with this item is that we can take $30,000 of someone's money and start paying people to look at their application.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I do have one more. So if we agree to this tonight, we still have the ability to decide whether we want to allow for them to receive an IRB and separately allow for them to receive and turn this into a CID.
All this does is start the process of fact-finding and negotiation. Yeah, you're not obligated to do anything at all. This could all fall apart before it ever comes back to the council. This is simply just because we're entering into a contract with them, we need the mayor to sign it. There is no obligation beyond taking their money.
Any other questions? Okay, I see no other questions. I would entertain a motion. Yeah, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a funding agreement between the city and Merriam Center One LLC and Merriam Center Two LLC.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
No.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item up is consider approval or resolution of a...
I'll introduce Joe Serrano, sorry about that. The next item on the agenda, Joe Serrano, our bond counsel, is going to tee off, and we do have the applicant here who will also be available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Joe Serrano, Kutek Rock Bond Counsel, special counsel to the city. Also, as Chris had mentioned, the applicant and the applicant's counsel are also here this evening. I want to make certain that we're not conflating what was the Merriam Town Center with this request. The Merriam Town Center is the funding agreement, and this is a different project. So I want to make certain that we don't blend those projects together. But in short, Trident Merriam LLC is the applicant. They submitted an IRB application for the request for approximately $24 million of industrial revenue bonds. The bonds will be used to pay for construction materials in a new project. The new project is approximately 63,000 square feet facility. It's going to house, if approved and built, it will house the Mercedes brand product. As with other industrial revenue bonds, specifically Merriam Grand Station, we would, if approved, enter in at a future date what we consider a base lease-lease arrangement, whereby the facility would be leased by the applicant to the city. The city would then lease it back, sufficient for rents that would be necessary to debt service the bonds. There's one item in here, and I want to make certain, again, as with the other industrial revenue bonds, the city is prohibited from issuing general obligation or using any other monies to pay for the bonds. That's statutorily driven. Included in this packet, your agenda memo along with the resolution, is a statement that the cost or the incentive that's going to be offered to, if approved, that would be offered is approximately $312,000. I wanted to make clear, when we were trying to figure out what the actual, what does $24 million result in an incentive by the city to the applicant? It came to my knowledge this morning. Unfortunately, and I apologize that I didn't realize that it wasn't a rehabilitation of a facility, it's actually a demolition and a new construction. The reason why that's important is because on new construction, labor is, on new construction, labor is tax-exempt, on renovation, labor is taxable. The other comment that I need to make mention of is that that dollar amount, the 312, also includes what we consider as destination-based sourcing. The destination-based sourcing is typically when, if you go to, let's say you go to Home Depot, you purchase lumber at Home Depot, that they will apply the tax rate associated with this jurisdiction. If you go to Overland Park, there are lows at Overland Park to buy the same materials, they will apply Overland Park's sales tax rate. When you order from out-of-state, you are supposed to, the retailers are supposed to collect the local sales tax. That's generally destination-based sourcing. That amount is estimated in this number, that the $312,000 is going to be substantially less because it includes labor. And in addition, it's an estimate. We don't know really what the materials will actually be purchased for this. It's an estimated budget that we have. In terms of comments earlier from a concerned citizen, I'm not in a position, as your bond counsel, to talk about economics. A municipal advisor is supposed to be in that position. But I did want to qualify, and hopefully the applicant can address this, that the sales tax exemption IRBs that were for consideration this evening are generally the least costly incentive to a city, and it's established by the state, we're utilizing state revenues generally, except for the amount of the city's sales taxes associated with the construction materials purchased. I'm hopeful that the applicant can address kind of the benefits that are received from a new facility, including property taxes, and hopefully some increased revenues from sales taxes, because in that destination-based sourcing, especially for the city, as they know, when you sell a car in Merriam, Merriam collects the sales tax. So I will turn, I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope the applicant's counsel would be able to maybe make their presentation. I could come back for any questions unless you have anything for me right now.
Any questions, Mr. Serrano, right now? No questions right now, but don't leave the premises.
I won't. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, looks like we have Mr. Heaven, please come forward and give your name and address, or address your company, I guess, for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Pete Heaven. My address is 6201 College Boulevard in Overland Park, and I represent Trident Merriam LLC, your applicant. Joe's put a heavy burden on me, and I have to explain myself, so I'll do so. You all know Aristocrat Motors. Trident, Merriam is an affiliate of Aristocrat Motors. And with me tonight are Merriam Battalion, the CEO of Aristocrat and Trident, and Kevin Killian, the CEO, I'm sorry, COO of Trident and Aristocrat as well. You know all about Aristocrat. It's been around for several decades in the city of Merriam. What people don't know, or little-known fact, is Aristocrat contributes about $1 million to the city of Merriam in sales tax each year. That's not total sales tax, that's the city's share of the sales tax. Plus, we pay about $400,000 a year in real estate taxes. Many of you have seen that the synchrony building has disappeared. That was what I used to call GE call center, and I think the mayor did, too, back in the old days. And what's happened is Aristocrat has bought that and is going to build a new Mercedes-Benz dealership. The question is why? Well, Mercedes-Benz said, "We need a new facility." I think some of you have heard about this. Mercedes is interesting. They have the ability to tell a dealership when to reconstruct, when to rebuild, when to replace, and our time has come up. So Mercedes-Benz has asked us to build a new facility. They also have a good deal of control over the type of facility we build. This project's going to be about $3.2 million, $30.2 million. And to give you a perspective, the typical car dealership of the same size is about $12 to $14 million. So we are doubling those costs. Why? It's going to be the nicest dealership in the Midwest, as far as we know. And the city should take pride in that, which will mean more sales tax. And when the project is completed, we estimate the real estate taxes will be around $400,000. So Aristocrat will be paying almost $800,000 in real estate taxes in the city of Merriam. The other thing that Mercedes can do, if we don't comply, there are two things Mercedes can do. If we don't build a new dealership, they can start assessing fines. But more, I guess more importantly, and one that we want to avoid, is Mercedes can also open other dealerships in the immediate area. And what we would like to prefer to have happen is have no further dealerships in the Johnson County area. And one way to do that is to build this dealership. I do want to take just a second and talk about the numbers. When we deal with an IRB sales tax exemption, we're only exempting sales tax on building materials. We talked to the contractor today, because these numbers dance around when we're trying to do budgets. The contractor today confirmed that he believes he'll have about $8 million, or $8.7 million in material purchases. That's 8.7 million. Simple math, 10% sales tax, that is $870,000. That would be what we estimate to be the value of this incentive. So it's, in the staff report, it indicated 2 to 3 million. It's really less than a million. The other issue that came up was destination-based taxes. And we asked the contractor, "How much will you be spending in the city of Merriam?", because that's really the direct indication of the sales tax you will lose if you grant this IRB. He told us it would be about $250,000. Merriam's share of the sales tax on that sum is $3,750. So we believe it's a minimal impact to the city, but a maximum benefit to the city to go forward with this. Again, over $1 million in sales tax, $800,000 in real estate tax, and, most importantly, supporting a business that has supported this city for many, many, many years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I also have, as I said, Merriam's here, Kevin's here, they can answer any technical questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Heaven? Okay, Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
We have several construction material businesses here in Merriam. Do you know if they will be sourcing any of the material from local businesses?
Yes, about a quarter of a million dollars. Unfortunately, so much of this construction is steel, specially-made glass, timbered glass, things that the city can't offer. But in terms of lumber-type materials, Home Depot-type materials, we'll be spending about $250,000 in the city.
Mr. Silvers.
Yeah, I have a question, and there's no disrespect in the question. It's probably going to sound more disrespectful than I actually mean it to. But the $800,000 that you're estimating seems to be a very small drop in the bucket in the cost of this dealership, the construction of it. But it's kind of a big deal to our residents. It's a lot of money to our residents and our tax base. How do you justify, justify the request for that when it is such a small amount in the scope of things for the cost of your redevelopment?
Sure, Mr. Silvers. Again, the impact to the city, loss of sales tax, based upon what the contractors told us, is about $3,700. And that's virtually, and I mean no disrespect, but that's a very, very small impact for the return the city gets from this small investment. And when we're building basically twice the value of a typical dealership, we're going to be in a loss situation, not that that's your problem, but it's going to be a terrible strain on Aristocrat for two or three years to try to make it. So every little bit helps, and that's the reason we like IRBs. They are state-sanctioned, and they take primarily the state sales tax, not the city's. So I think the impact to the city is very, very small on this.
Any other questions for Mr. Heaven? Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
I'm wondering, I mean, you guys deal in luxury product, and you're a luxury company, and I'm hesitant to give incentives to a luxury business, especially one that is so successful. Why do you need incentives?
The cost of construction. We're basically doubling the normal cost of construction for this. We're going to provide a better venue for the city of Merriam and their residents and area residents. And the fact that you sell an expensive car doesn't mean you make more money. In fact, a lot of times, we make less money than you would on a much less expensive automobile. The problem with automobiles, the industry in general, is our price is set by someone other than us. The factory tells us what we can sell a car for, and there's very little flexibility there. So the only way you make a profit is to manage your costs. And in this case, we have another force at work that's making it hard to manage our costs, and that is increased building costs that are being required of us. So that's why we'd like to have the incentive.
Well, I think that happens with every business, though, right? Like Chipotle can't sell burritos for, you know, more than what Chipotle says they're supposed to sell burritos for, and they have to build to spec what they say they're going to build to spec to. So I would compare, in all fairness, apples to apples, and based on the delta of what you're describing, right? So I know your wood and your finishes, and, you know, those kinds of things are more luxury than you might see at, you know, like the Subaru dealership where I go.
Sure, absolutely.
But that still doesn't answer my question. Is there, you know, like, I'm again wondering, like, it's a luxury product, and I'm struggling to give a luxury company incentives, I guess is my point. So make the case for me, other than we're still going to be here, you know?
Well, okay. And let me go back to your Chipotle example. Yes, Chipotle tells you how much you can sell a rice bowl for, but Chipotle doesn't come in and say you have to build something that's twice more expensive than the Chipotle a block away, correct? So you do manage your costs with a Chipotle, and we can't in this case. But I guess where I want to go is, I don't think the fact that we sell a luxury car means that we are less in need as a business for help. We're undertaking something that's never been undertaken in this city before. The costs are phenomenal, and the costs are much higher than they would be for any other dealership. So I'm not sure that the fact it's a luxury car makes any difference to the incentive request. I'm sorry, if I'm not answering your question, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I have no other questions.
I have one.
Okay, Ms. Hands.
So with the new building, we'll see more new sales, I'm sure.
Hopefully.
And then what, would you share with us what's happening with the old building?
The old building will be remodeled. We are going to do more service, and we'll also have spinner, I'm sorry, Sprinter vans sold through that facility.
So is that expected to be additional revenue as well?
We hope so.
So us helping you get this going is going to still generate more money in our sales tax buckets?
We expect, we hope, a lot more, yes.
We hope.
Yeah.
We don't have any numbers.
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Veda.
I thought the Sprinter portion was going to be in the new dealership, not in the old existing one.
Let me ask Merriam.
Because that was a big part of the conversation before.
And I may have it wrong, and if I did, I apologize.
That's fine, that's why I'm asking the question.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here and to consider this. The new building will, we did meet prior with some of the council members and talked, as you know. The new building will house the Sprinter, and I think... The new building will house the Sprinter, and I think Pete, there may be some confusion on that. That's part of the reason that we need to build a 63,000-square-foot facility, is we've added Sprinter. They've allocated us 1,100 units, so the revenue will go up by, hopefully, the sales of 1,100 Sprinter units. That will increase our sales tax, obviously. The cost of this building is significantly higher than any dealership we've ever built, and significantly higher than any dealership that we know of in the city of Merriam or the whole city of Kansas City. So servicing the debt on $30 million is going to be a daunting task for us. And we don't, we anticipate there'll be a significant loss of revenue for us as far as dollars that we'll spend to operate that business for the first two or three years. So that's why we come before you and ask for this, and as Pete has said, it is a state mandated, and it has very little effect on the city of Merriam. And I don't say that lightly. I know that you guys are empowered to protect our city, and I respect that. We feel like we've been a great contributor to the city of Merriam and hope to continue that for many years. What Pete has said to you about being controlled by the manufacturer is not something that I, I love, or I agree with, but it is a fact of reality, that we could refuse to build this building. It would be less daunting for us personally, financially, and operationally. And it's been a tough decision to move forward. If we do not build the new building, they will most likely add a third Mercedes dealership, which will dramatically affect the revenue that we are able to produce and the revenue we're able to keep in the city of Merriam. So we have chosen to move forward, and we're going to do the best job we can to continue to be a great part of the city and continue to produce the revenue that flows to the city directly.
Mr. Silver.
I guess I have a two-point question. Is Mercedes requesting that you build the Sprinter portion of your dealership?
That was part of the condition that they gave us, the Sprinter franchise. The Sprinter franchise is a commercial division of Mercedes, and they've allocated us 1,100 more vehicles. So part of the consideration is that we would build, incorporate Sprinter into the new building. The current building will be renovated, we'll be continuing to do extra service work there, and we'll be housing all of our pre-owned in a showroom that we've never had before.
Okay. And then something that was mentioned when this topic was first brought up to us, and then it was mentioned a couple times again this evening, is that you kind of have no choice. Like Mercedes is telling you that this has to be done, or there's going to be other consequences, like another dealership in the area. Knowing this, being a Mercedes dealership, is, are these renovations part of your business plan? And if not, can we expect down the road for you to come back in front of council, next time you have a mandate by Mercedes to upgrade your facility, asking for, for help?
The motor car dealers, so the NADA, they've lobbied very hard to get the manufacturers to lay off of the dealerships and make these demands. And they've been successful in negotiating one thing, that after the renovations are done, they cannot come back for 10 years and ask for anything.
But is it part of your business plan? Was it part of your business plan leading up to this renovation, and is it going to be part of your business plan moving forward?
I wouldn't say it was part of our business plan, but obviously, when we received the estimates on the cost to build the building, we tried to figure out how we possibly will make this work. So to service the additional debt on $30 million will be daunting to us. We estimated it will increase our costs by over $200,000 a month, and that's very difficult to come up with ways to sell enough to earn that much money.
Right, I understand, and I'm kind of feeling similar to how Whitney is, where if I put it into the mindset of a homeowner, a homeowner has to budget for large financial hits like a new roof or something that goes wrong with their sewage, and they have to save for that and prepare for it. And that's what I, that's why I was asking if it's part of your business plan to be setting aside money, knowing that Mercedes is going to possibly come to you and say you have to do a major upgrade?
I think it becomes a business decision. We would have had no problem upgrading our current facility, because that would have been a lot less money. But to build from the ground up and to have to spend this enormous amount of money was never in our business plan.
Mr. Leahy.
I just want to comment on a couple things. One, you mentioned that the small impact of Merriam taxpayers, but I think we also have to protect state, county, schools, that don't get to vote on whether or not we pass an IRB, that money that isn't going into their pocket, that can't be here to defend themselves or choose one way or another. Also, I think the other point about businesses having fixed prices is not entirely true. I think that there are, that just because the sticker price says one thing, there are other fees that the dealership adds out the door as well that can help control or adjust costs. My question, though, my question, though, really, is about, you talked about there's about $8 million and change in construction materials that are taxable, and that that's going to equate to about $800,000 and change in deferred sales tax. I get the concept of IRB that, you know, we're basically deferring sales tax on construction materials. I guess I don't understand the legalese and the reason why the principal is not to exceed 24 million. I don't know if that's a joke question or not, and how we get to 24 million in principal amount, not to exceed. And then at the bottom, I mean, I know we've talked about how renovation versus new construction, and what's taxable and what's not, at the bottom, for what we expect it to be. But can we talk, Joe, can you mention why we're agreeing to the principal amount for 24 million?
Sure, council member, once again, Joe Serrano. When we size bonds, typically, we take the application that is provided, and then we kind of look at it and say, okay, what do we, is this a right number? We know land acquisition costs are not really included. When, a lot of times, it becomes what truly is taxable. Actually, in this instance, we could downsize the value of the par amount of those bonds. In the old days, when we were dealing with property tax abatements, we actually had to include what is being financed with industrial revenue bonds to maximize or enjoy the abatement that is being offered by the municipality. In this instance, we actually could go back, downsize to what is actually taxable, and then, and then, and then come back with a resolution of intent that is right along those lines, or we could make a modification. I just don't know if you have, if the developer, I mean, the applicant actually has that true number. We put it in a not-to-exceed amount, we put a little bit of cushion in there, we can add cost of issuance if we wanted to. In sales tax-only IRBs, where there's no property tax abatements, we could reduce that amount for what truly is being taxable, and not even run cost of issuance through the, through the, through the project fund of these IRBs.
That's fine, I just, there's a lot of numbers that are a lot higher than what we're being told tonight, and I would feel a lot more comfortable if the number was not to exceed somewhat closer to what we're being told the total incentive package is going to be.
Understood, understood.
We could do that, sure.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's the path, then I think we could work with the applicant to figure out truly what is taxable, and then come back for council reconsideration at a later time.
I don't know if everybody else agrees with that, but.
Mr. Neal.
I think possibly council member Silver was kind of getting at this, I'm not sure, but since you're also envisioning some work on your existing facilities for repurposing them for pre-owned vehicles, are you anticipating needing incentives for that work as well, and coming back to ask for that?
No, we are not.
Okay, any other questions for the applicants? Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
My question's probably more for Joe, or maybe someone in the legal department. So if I'm understanding this correctly, it seems as if, from the city's standpoint, we're basically withholding, allowing withholding, what did we say, 80, $8,000, $80,000 from the citizens, basically, in the form of taxes, tax-exempt, et cetera, et cetera, with the hopes of getting that back tenfold in the future, once this development is done?
Yeah, I guess I'll go back just a step. Once a resolution of intent for industrial revenue bonds is approved, then what is undertaken is a request to the state to issue what is considered a project, it's called a project exemption certificate. That is approved from the state based on the resolution of intent, which is for consideration. That project exemption certificate is then given to each of the retailers, such that they do not have to charge sales tax on the materials that are being used in this facility, to use, you know, use for construction in this facility. So when we talk about what are the costs, it's really what we call a sales tax exemption on the construction materials, which is your lost revenue. In terms of what is going to be paid tenfold or not, I defer to the applicant, what we see typically in the line that we, and we see quite a few of these, when we start looking at what are the additional costs, or additional benefits, and again, I'm not really supposed to weigh in on, I just am relaying what I see in it on spreadsheets, is increased property taxes, increased sales, and resulting in increased sales tax. And then you weigh that against the cost, and then that's really kind of the analysis that we typically see governing bodies undertake. Does that make sense? Okay.
Any other questions for the applicants, for Mr. Serrano?
I have one.
Okay, Ms. Leahy.
The bond application mentions the new building for new and used Mercedes, but I thought the existing building was going to be used for the used Mercedes. Or is that both buildings?
There's a designation between used, there's certain used that are called certified pre-owned, those will be sold out of the main new building, and all other used will be handled out of the current building.
Okay, that's it? All right. Considering, I guess, that brings us up to speed as to where we're at, there was a concern about the $24,000 figure. So is that something you guys need to massage and come up with a different number for us before we take action on this?
24 million.
24 million, excuse me, I don't want to say 24 million. Is that, I don't know that we can go forward this evening if we're going to change that number.
No, and frankly, you probably shouldn't, because your fees are higher with the higher issuance.
Right.
At 24 million, the city gets more fees, and the 24 million isn't the amount of construction materials. That's the total project cost minus, basically, acquisition costs. So by keeping the number higher, you really make more money, but it doesn't change the dynamic of how much sales tax Marion will be able to exempt. It's still based on actual building materials.
The materials are.
So we're very comfortable leaving it at 24 million.
Okay, does anybody understand what Mr. Heaven was talking about?
Yeah, I understand that part. I would feel more comfortable if we had an incentives-not-to-exceed number that was closer to $900,000, which is above what we were told tonight.
Mr. Serrano would like to speak.
Joe Serrano, when we size the bonds, that $800,000 is really the tax on the materials, so you would multiply, multiply that by 10, 10%, you know, 10, to get the $8 million as referenced earlier. But we can't, we have to purchase the construction materials, so you have to size it with the amount of the construction materials, not the savings, not the tax exemption. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense the way it has, it's the way the procurement is done, but we can't add a line that the total incentive package is not to exceed a certain dollar figure, can we?
It's a result, it's a, it's an equation of, if we know what the true budget is, and again, it's a not-to-exceed amount, but if we know what the true budget is, let's say it's $10 million, then we back into what the incentive request is just by application of the sales tax. Right, we won't know, I mean, with, with rising prices, of course, and we put not-to-exceed, and a lot of times, we'll come back, because the city derives an origination fee off of the par amount of the bonds, as well as I get paid off the par amount of the bonds. At some point, at a later time, which we just did with Merrim Grand Station, we come back with a bond ordinance and say, listen, you approved a not-to-exceed $24 million, the actual cost is X number of dollars, and then we apply the origination fee and bond council fees associated with that, as well as we can generate what actually the incentive is at that point in time. Now, with IRBs, I'm sorry to give a little bit of a lecture here, but with industrial revenue bonds, as you noticed, in Merrim Grand Station, for sales tax exemption on the commercial, we did it upfront. They're still over there building. With a property tax abatement, typically, we issue near the end of the, the construction cycle, mainly because they want to enjoy the benefit of the full value of that, the constructed facility. So there's a lot of different ways that we could get at there. If we want to say, listen, notwithstanding what the budget is, we do not want to have an incentive over X, then we would back into that number by applying the budget times the, the, the sales tax rate, and then apply the city's sales tax rate, and that would effectively give the incentive that is being offered by the, by the city. And the one thing I do want to say is, we do have conversations with the state associated with incentives. I get the fact that you are stewards of public funds, and I'm not here to sell a project. That is not my role. But we do have various conversations with the state, whether it's the Commerce, or with Department of Revenue, or Department of Administration. One of the things that they routinely say is, we've offered this, we don't really want to, we offered it as a form of a state's inducement, but we're not going to manage it. It's for the, the local governments to manage. But it is something that we recognize that these, it's being financed with, primarily with state funds, and until they change that law, which they may at some point, that, that they're willing to continue to offer industrial revenue bonds for types of facilities that qualify. It then becomes a policy decision by the, by the local government as to whether or not it's something that wants to be an investment by that, by the local government. So, so Joe, is it, is it possible, is it possible to pass the, the resolution of intent tonight with a not-to-exceed 24, 48 million, $24 million? And then, once we, with the understanding that we want that number to be as small as feasible, to then come back and pass the ordinance with that number? Because all this is, this is just something we submit to the state that gets them the certificate of exemption, right? So we could come back and pass an ordinance that's $13 million. Absolutely. Or 12, or 8, or 7, or whatever that number is, because we honed in on what it is. Absolutely. That is a possible path forward, as opposed to coming back and doing all of that. That is correct, that is correct. What we cannot do is have a 24, not to exceed $24 million, and it comes in at $25 million. Then we're coming in to amend the resolution. But if it goes in low- But if it goes in lower because it's structured as a not to exceed amount, when the bond ordinance is considered and the bond documents is considered, we would come back and say, listen, this is the, this is the amount that is actually subject to tax. This is the maximum amount of the, of, of the authority that we are offering in a bond ordinance, and, and then we would issue bonds in that amount. At, at, at a later time, of course, subject to additional consideration by the council.
Okay, Ms. Ryder?
Okay, one last question. So we're, if we go through this, whether that's today or another, another day, we're basically investing, hoping that we'll get more money back in the future, right? What happens if everything falls apart and this building doesn't, be, isn't constructed as planned?
Yeah. There is a unique provision in the request for project exemption certificate. It's called a PR 76. That provides, if you do not finance the facility with industrial revenue bonds, then the Department of Revenue can come back and, 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 and will actually impose the sales tax. It's, you know, they'll actually impose the sales tax on the materials that were purchased, and they would be paying not only the sales tax plus interest and penalties on those numbers. It's, it's just a small little provision that's in this, I mean, you can't find it in the regulations, but we've had discussions with Department of Revenues, what does this mean? And it's the only hook that they have provided that says, if you don't come back and issue bonds at a later time and, and verify the amount that you use in the project, then we are going to impose the sales tax and penalties and interest. And we've seen that one other time.
But the, those would be paid by the, the applicant, not by the city?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That's what, I want to be sure that is said.
Apologize. Yeah, what it is, is the project exemption certificate, that PR 76, that form PR 76, it's the city's application that is making the request for the exemption, but the developer as a third-party beneficiary signs the second page that says, if you don't issue bonds, you understand that the state's going to impose not only sales tax, but also penalties and interest on you. You are going to be obligated to pay that. So it, but yeah, it's, it's definitely, as we know, as I stated many a times, we cannot, we are prohibited in statute to use any state revenues to pay these bonds.
Or city revenues.
City, state, yeah, any public funds, that's correct, really municipalities, yeah, my apologies, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So what I'm hearing is that if we leave it at not to exceed, we can have the expectation that that can be downsized at the appropriate time when the ordinance is done. I don't know if I need to put that in my motion that I'm willing to make, but.
Yeah. The, the, as council to the city, one of the things I think we would want to make certain is that we don't get too far out there. If we know that it's double, that what it's going to be, then that's a disservice, I think, not only for this, for the residents, but also for the council. We don't want to have that much cushion built in, in my opinion, as council, that we kind of need to know what the expectation is. And, and if we downsize it and there's, there's additional costs because of just timing considerations, then, then we have the ability to come back and say, listen, we underestimated, we under-valued, we didn't know the cost. We see this and we hear this an awful lot these days, that we have to amend the resolution of intent to increase that amount in order for them to be able to purchase from, on an exempt basis. So yes, the answer is you can go forward with a not to exceed with an expectation that it could be something lower. I don't know if that is the appropriate approach, knowing that we size these, I think we could downsize them, refine it, and then you could vote on something that's a little bit more
So since you're, since you're our council, are you counseling us that that is probably the best option at this point?
My recommendation was to, for, 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 for the city administrator and myself to work with the developer, to find the, the, the actual amount that's going to be subject to taxation. We could work through the destination sourcing rules because I have a little bit of, I, I, probably a different interpretation of those rules with, with Mr. Heaven, and then come back with, to you and say, this is what we believe the incentive offer is from the city. This is the amount that is the state being offered. The school district doesn't pick up sales tax, but the, the county's share, the city's share of the county's sales tax would be included. So we could have more detail associated with that, and as council, I would prefer that approach as opposed to going to a not to exceed amount that's, there's too much cushion built in based on what we learned today in this evening.
So then, as a matter of procedure, are we just not going to take action? Do we table? What do we do?
Looks like legal now for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would recommend, I mean, I don't think we can put a number on the table right now because we don't know what their taxable costs are going to be, so they're going to need to work with Mr. Heaven and Mr. Serrano and Chris, figure that out and just bring it back.
But I, I need to know if we need to make a motion to table, do, what?
So, yeah, a motion to table brings it back at the next meeting automatically.
Does it tie us into exactly the same wording? Because then we would get in trouble again.
Right, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, this is the resolution that's up for consideration. You could obviously, you would introduce an amended resolution or a different resolution with a different number. Or you could simply vote it down tonight and we could just take action.
I don't want to go there.
Okay.
I truly don't.
You, you could, you could. You could simply request that, that, make a motion that staff work with the developer and bring back a revised resolution.
Okay.
Makes more sense to me. Go ahead, Ms. Yadrich.
I have a question, is this number, I mean, now that we understand why they recommended it, is it that big of an issue that we need to?
Yeah, the council just told us that he recommends we wait.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I think that would be a good idea.
Third number.
All right.
Right, I like the fact that, let's not just say we're not going to do it.
So, so what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Is to make a motion that staff and council and the applicant revise the, the intent for the IRBs to come forward to us. I move that we direct staff.
Okay, is that motion, give her everything you need?
We'll come back with an amended number.
Amended number, okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you think you guys will have that number in two weeks, or do you, I mean, it, it could be a month, as far as we're concerned. Yeah, there's no timeframe for us.
Mayor, we should have it within a week.
Oh, okay. Well, then work with our staff and hopefully, if we, if you guys have those numbers worked out, then maybe we can bring it back up at the next council meeting.
Bring it back when we have them.
When we have them, okay. Thank you, guys, for coming, okay. All right. Wow, it looks like CIP update, is that our next item up here on staff information? Okay.
There we go. Took me a little bit of work. So you've seen this project, 55th Street Improvement Project. As you know, we completed construction in May and installed sod, and then it got hot and some of the sod died. So it's finally sod season, and it's scheduled to be replaced this week. We watched the project with the contractor and identified areas, so we'll install it this week. Once it's watered for 20 days, we'll go back, back in and inspect it, and then hopefully it's all alive and we'll approve it, and then we'll turn over the maintenance to the residents. And feel free to ask any questions as I go. So the 50th Terrace and England Street Drainage Project, BHC is currently updating project plans and easements. We originally anticipated a lining project, but we went through the calculations and some of the pipes need to be upgraded for capacity, so it's a lining and an upsizing project. And so once we get the plans more defined, we're going to meet with the residents. Some of the pipes have been there for a while, but we need easements, and then we may need some construction easements as well. So we'll be meeting with property owners, and we're anticipating probably bidding it in December or January and then starting construction next spring. Our Mill and Overlay project is completed, and sod should have been installed today. I didn't go out and look, but that was the schedule, and we'll follow the same sod procedures. Hopefully, it will take in 20 days, it'll be watered, we'll inspect it and approve it, and then that project will be completed for the year. Our sidewalk replacement project, sidewalks have all been replaced, and sod was installed on September 29th. So once the 20 days is up, we'll go back and check it and follow the same procedure of inspecting and approving it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
I had one on the, the sidewalks happen to go in front of my house this time around, and the sidewalks all look great. One thing I want to note, that the letters that we got didn't, I got my letter on the sod after, like, three days after the sod had been installed. I'm not as meticulous with my lawn as some of my neighbors are, and they had already taken provisions to seed and fertilize the back fill, and then the, all of that work was for not, once the new sod was put down, because we didn't know when, if the sod was going to come this year, if it was going to come in the spring. So I just wanted to make sure that if we can in the future to get the letters out a little bit sooner, so that they come before the work is done, and the residents have the option to opt out if they so choose.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, your residents went to that extra trouble, and we'll do a better job of explaining that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Kunkki? Okay, I guess I see none, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, looks like, do we? Next up for our staff items. We have minutes for the 5701 Committee, that was in our packets. We got also minutes for the Park Recreation Board Advisory Minutes. We don't have Director Slocum here tonight, so we can't ask her questions anyway, so I, I.
I just want to note that what was in my packet, at any rate, that I got this morning, wasn't exactly the, the latest version of these minutes in these two things. And I've mentioned it to, to the city clerk. She thinks we know why and can work on that, but just believe that that's not the final answer. Because one of them said that Mayor Sisom called the meeting to order, so I kind of thought it wasn't right. Well, on that one, but not on the other one.
Well, maybe they were just seconds and not minutes.
Yeah, could be.
I'm here all week, okay.
Just a warning.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Engel, do we have anything else come before this?
Just a couple, couple updates. Our Public Art Master Plan survey is now available and will be available online until the 20th, I believe. There are postcards out on the table, I think there's postcards in your drawer, and there are postcards handed out at Merriam Drive Live, and you can get to it on our website. We are pushing it out on social media and all of our different platforms, so vote early, vote often, let them, let them know what you think about public art in Merriam. Again, just to echo, echo the mayor's comments, our recycle event, want to make sure, give a shout out to Jenna and Julie for their great effort in that by name, because they, they really did a great job putting that together, as well as our volunteers, Jason, Christine, all the other folks that helped make that event. And then also, Merriam Drive Live this weekend, fantastic, Anna, the volunteers. It's only through volunteers and great staff members that we can have those fantastic events, weather held out for us, so both of those great events, and appreciate people's effort making those happen. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engel?
I have one. I have one quick question. Is KDOT done with Shawnee Mission Parkway?
Say that again.
Is KDOT completed on Shawnee Mission Parkway?
I'm being nodded, yes.
I meant to ask when you were up there, I just didn't think about it, okay.
They submitted an email today saying we should be done.
I didn't drive it today, so just, okay, great, thank you.
Now, Merriam Grand Station is still going to be.
Understand.
Yeah, in the way.
Understand. Yeah, just had some residents that were a little surprised, right, like KDOT, so, yeah, thank you.
Any other question? Go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I just want to make a quick comment. I know you were joking about vote early and vote often, but I'm pretty sure you have to put an email address and a name.
You can't vote more than once, I tried.
Not vote more than once. We, we just want to make sure that the public knows that the results won't be skewed.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay, I see no other questions for you, sir. I would entertain a motion this evening for, okay, Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, move that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion adjourned, we have a second. Okay, Ms. Hands.
I second.
Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.